Resolution number 235, 2020. Authorization for the County of Columbia to make home rule requests for special legislation to offer a 20-year retirement plan to an eligible employee. Upon recommendations of the Finance Committee, at a special meeting held on the 12th day of August 2020, Theodore Blank was hired in 2011 as a communications officer and was enrolled in the New York State Retirement, in the A-15 Retirement Plan as Tier Five employee. And on March 12, 2014, Mr. Blank changed his position of employment with the county, became a deputy sheriff, and completed an IRS 5498A form which would change his retirement plan to the Section 553 Plan, or 553 Plan for Deputy Sheriffs. This executed form was sent to New York State Retiree by the county, and it was subsequently discovered that Mr. Blank's retirement enrollment has never been changed to the 553 Plan. So he's been pretty much paying into the older plan, not this newer plan, and we haven't been supporting it. What this is to do is to pretty much just make it whole. It's not going to cost the county any more money than if we've been paying from the beginning, where, when he got switched over to this other plan. So, and I understand that there's going to be, there's no tax, there's no other fees involved other than us just paying that differential. Rob, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to jump in on this with?
No, you covered it, and the resolution spells it out. To get him enrolled in the correct pension retroactively, Assemblyman Tagg's office is willing to make this home rule request for special legislation from the Senate and Assembly to be signed by the governor, which would put him in the right pension retroactively. So that's what this resolution is, and Assemblyman Tagg's office has asked us to do it as soon as possible, no later than this meeting, so that we can get it on their dockets for the upcoming session when they come back in.
Thank you.
This is correcting a mistake, and I think it's the right thing to do, and I will move it.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, Sterling.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there anything else before the Finance Committee? Not, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see at the 7 o'clock, right Matt?
Yeah, the public hearings are at 7:00. They're different links, so everyone will have to jump off and jump back on.
Okay. See you in a little bit, take care.
Okay, tonight we have three. Sorry. Tonight we have three public hearings. The first public hearing is for Columbia Green Community College Budget, which I'll open the hearing up.
Chairman, you want to take attendance first?
Okay, I'm sorry. Kelly, you want to take attendance?
Okay, I'm just, are you ready? Bastin?
Here.
Wygelt?
He's here.
I see him.
Leader?
Here.
Ben Venuto?
Here.
Stats?
Here.
Adams?
She was here.
Oh, I see her. You just have to unmute Brenda, but I got you. Metler?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Riley? Supervisor John Riley? Eldridge?
Hi, I'm here.
Fury?
Here.
Chipkowski, oh, I'm sorry, Ward?
Here.
Lagonia?
Here.
Sterling?
Here.
Mia?
Yeah.
Chamitas?
Here.
Musman?
Here.
Scolera?
Here.
Guzzi?
Here.
Holtling?
Here.
Morrell?
Here.
Knott? Skoda? Bear with us, we're coming up with figures. Okay, 3247 present, 288 absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. So I'll open the public hearing for Columbia Green Community College Budget, and I'll ask the clerk to read the notice.
Please take notice that the public hearing will be held for the Columbia County Board of Supervisors online, virtually, at HTTPS, meet.google.com with the address, on Wednesday, August 12, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Therefore, concerning the proposed 2020 to 2021 operating budget for the Columbia County Community College, at such time and place, all persons interested in the subject matter will be heard concerning the same. Dated August 3, 2020, to New York, Kelly Estacaro, Columbia County Board Supervisors Clerk.
Okay, thank you. So we'll take comments. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Are there any comments from supervisors? Any comments from supervisors? Any comments from supervisors?
Supervisors, I just want to say how appreciative we are that the college worked with us in a decrease, and I think the college, particularly in these times, is so important for our young people to have this asset. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Sterling. President Drummer, do you have anything to add?
Okay. And I'm sorry, I was trying to find the mute button. I just want to thank all of the supervisors for their incredible support. We're all going through a very surreal time, and working together, we will get through this, and I feel very confident that we are providing the best possible education that we can for our students in spite of these, you know, the remote and online learning modalities. I'm very pleased to report that in a recent SUNY survey of students who were enrolled for the spring semester, Columbia Green received an 89% high satisfaction or satisfaction rating compared to 76% of the ratings at other community colleges. So it really speaks to the incredible faculty that we have at the college, the amazing staff who all came together and helped our, you know, our teams really get into the new modality, and we're moving forward. And I think I have to say that when this is behind us, we will emerge a much stronger institution, a much leaner institution, and again, we could not do it without your help. So I'm very grateful.
Thank you, President Drummer. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. This resolution will be voted on during the full board meeting with the resolutions. So I will move on and open the public hearing for Local Law III of 2020, imposing a transfer tax, and I'd like to ask the clerk to read the notice.
Please take notice that the Columbia County Board of Supervisors shall hold a public hearing on the 12th day of August 2020 at 7:00 PM virtually at meet.google.com concerning the proposed enactment of Local Law III of 2020, imposing an additional transfer tax on the conveyance of real property within the County of Columbia. Hobbies as said, proposed local law are available in the office of the clerk of the board or online. By order of the clerk of the board, Kelly Estacaro, August 3, 2020.
Hey, thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this local law? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? I'll ask, are there any comments from supervisors? Any comments from supervisors?
I had a quick question, Chairman Morrell. I apologize, this is probably just, I just don't understand it. On page four, it talks about the imposition of the tax, and it talks about it applying to any conveyance occurring on or after December 1st of 2007, so this is actually going to go back 13 years? And cover, like, everyone who bought or sold a house in the last 13 years is going to then owe the county something?
I can answer that, Chairman Morrell. It's Rob Fitzsimmons, County Attorney. The first time this tax was imposed was 2007, and so everybody that's gotten a mortgage and recorded it in Columbia County is a condition of it being recorded that tax is collected. So there wouldn't be any retroactive collection, only in the very rare instance, say someone had an unrecorded mortgage that someone was paying on, and they were to go into default, and they decided to record the mortgage now, they would have to pay the applicable tax if the mortgage was executed after 2007. But it's not going to go back and get anyone that hasn't already recorded their mortgage.
So in essence, we're just extending something that already is in existence?
You got it, exactly. And the mortgage tax amounts to 50 cents per $100 of mortgage value that is collected by the county clerk when the mortgage gets recorded, usually when a property is sold.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other supervisors have any comments? Any supervisors have any comments? With that, I'll close the public hearing, and we need to do a roll call vote on Law III of 2020.
Bastin?
Yes.
Wygelt?
Supervisor Wygelt?
You need to unmute down at the bottom, hit your microphone. Or nod yes, if anybody can see him on the screen.
Well, he just left the meeting.
Oh geez. Lead, ah, so that would be a nay.
He hit the wrong button.
Yeah, he probably hit the telephone button. Leader?
Yes.
Ben Venuto?
Yes.
Stats?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Metler?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Eldridge?
Yes.
Mia?
Yes.
Chamitas?
Yes.
Musman?
Yes.
Scolera?
Yes.
Guzzi?
Yes.
Holtling?
Yes.
Morrell?
Yes.
Knott?
Yes.
Skoda?
Okay, please take notice that the Columbia County Board of Supervisors shall hold a public hearing on the 12th day of August 2020 at 7:00 PM virtually at meet.google.com concerning the proposed enactment of Local Law III of 2020, imposing an additional transfer tax on the conveyance of real property within the County of Columbia. Hobbies as said, proposed local law are available in the office of the clerk of the board or online. By order of the clerk of the board, Kelly Estacaro, August 3, 2020.
Hey, thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this local law? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? I'll ask, are there any comments from supervisors? Any comments from supervisors?
I had a quick question, Chairman Morrell. I apologize, this is probably just, I just don't understand it. On page four, it talks about the imposition of the tax, and it talks about it applying to any conveyance occurring on or after December 1st of 2007, so this is actually going to go back 13 years? And cover, like, everyone who bought or sold a house in the last 13 years is going to then owe the county something?
I can answer that, Chairman Morrell. It's Rob Fitzsimmons, County Attorney. The first time this tax was imposed was 2007, and so everybody that's gotten a mortgage and recorded it in Columbia County is a condition of it being recorded that tax is collected. So there wouldn't be any retroactive collection, only in the very rare instance, say someone had an unrecorded mortgage that someone was paying on, and they were to go into default, and they decided to record the mortgage now, they would have to pay the applicable tax if the mortgage was executed after 2007. But it's not going to go back and get anyone that hasn't already recorded their mortgage.
So in essence, we're just extending something that already is in existence?
You got it, exactly. And the mortgage tax amounts to 50 cents per $100 of mortgage value that is collected by the county clerk when the mortgage gets recorded, usually when a property is sold.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other supervisors have any comments? Any supervisors have any comments? With that, I'll close the public hearing, and we need to do a roll call vote on Law III of 2020.
Bastin?
Yes.
Wygelt?
Yes.
Leader?
Yes.
Ben Venuto?
Yes.
Stats?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Metler?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Eldridge?
Yes.
Mia?
Yes.
Chamitas?
Yes.
Musman?
Yes.
Scolera?
Yes.
Guzzi?
Yes.
Holtling?
Yes.
Morrell?
Yes.
Knott?
Yes.
Skoda? Doesn't mean the same thing. Um, let's see. So 3431A, 454N, Local Law passes.
Thank you. So Kelly, I believe they have to sign off and resign then?
Correct, now you'll go into the full board link.
Okay, and that starts at 7:30?
And that starts at 7:30, but we, so we're all set, right, everybody?
Yep. Rob, do we all, do we have anything else to do, Rob?
Nope, we are all good.
All right, thank you, sir. See you back here in a little bit.
See y'all soon.
Okay, thirty-four, thirty-one As, four fifty-four Nays, uh, the local law passes.
Okay, thank you very much. So I gotta, I'll open the public hearing for local law four of 2020 with imposing a mortgage tax. And I'd like to ask the clerk to read the notice.
Okay, please take notice at the Columbia County Board of Supervisors. Hold a public hearing on the twelfth day of August at seven p.m. virtually. Uh, meet dot google dot com concerning the proposed enactment of local law four of 2020 imposing an additional mortgage tax in the, in the Columbia County. Backuses said proposed local law are available to the board's office or online. I order the clerk to the board for telling us the carryout August 2020.
Okay, thank you. And are there any comments from the public?
Wayne.
Are there any comments from the public? Are there any comments from the public? Uh, do supervisors have any comments? Supervisors have any comments? Supervisors have any comments? With that, I'm going to close the public hearing and we need to do a roll call vote on local law four of 2020.
Okay, here we go. Bassin.
Yes.
Wygelt.
Yes.
Woo-hoo! Leader.
Yes.
Ben Benuto.
Yes.
Stat.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Metler.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Riley.
Yes.
Eldridge. Bury.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Lagonia.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes.
Mia.
Yes.
Uh, Chimitis.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Scolera.
Yes.
Gozy.
Yes.
Holtling.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Knott. Skoda. Doesn't mean the same thing. Um, let's see. So thirty-four, thirty-one A, four fifty-four Nays, uh, local law passes.
Thank you. So Kelly, I believe they have to sign off and re-sign in.
Correct, now you'll go into the full board link.
Okay, and that starts at seven thirty?
And that starts at seven thirty, um, but we, so we're all set, right, everybody?
Yep, Rob, are we all, do we have anything else to do, Rob?
Nope, we are all good.
All right, thank you, sir. See you back here in a little bit.
See y'all soon.
I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
I'll be right there, okay?
Okay.
Are you ready? Bassin?
Here.
Weigelt?
Here.
Leader?
Here.
Ben Venuto?
Here.
Stat?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
Mettler?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Riley?
Here.
Eldridge?
I'm here.
Bury?
Here.
Ward? Lagonia?
Here.
Sterling?
Here.
Mia?
Yeah.
Uh, Chimitas?
Here.
Musman?
Here.
Scolera?
Here.
Duzzi?
Here.
Holtling?
Here.
Morell?
Here.
Knott? Skoda? Thirty-three, forty-three present, one ninety-two absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, next, I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation. Uh, Elena DeFeo Keen, our labor attorney, is on, on the line, so if I could get a motion.
I'll make that one.
Motion, Ben Venuto.
Second, Ben Venuto.
Ben Venuto? All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, we need to wait a second while Oswaldo cuts the feed. Thank you.
Gary.
Okay.
I'd like to entertain a motion to pay the bills, accept the treasurer's report, and file the minutes within the clerk's office.
Make the motion.
Benvenuto.
Motion, Benvenuto, second.
Leader.
That's the leader, supervisor leader, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gary, I need to ask the clerk to read the resolutions.
Okay. Resolution 208 of 2020 through 212 of 2020 by Supervisor Sterling.
Mr. Chairman, I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Second, second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Gary.
Resolution 213 of 2020 through 221 of 2020 by Supervisor Lagonia.
The chairman, I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Second, Benvenuto.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Gary.
Okay. Resolution 222 of 2020 through 226 of 2020. We'll have to do a roll call on 226, but sponsored by Supervisor Scolera.
So it'll be 222 to 225?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Well, he'll have to make a motion on 226 as well.
All right. So we need a resolution or a motion, I mean?
Supervisor Scolera.
This is chairman, I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Second, Sterling.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Gary, so we need a roll call vote on 226.
Let me just, yes. Article 29 of the county board of supervisors to maintain the increased rate of sales of taxes and sales and uses of tangible personal property and uncertain services as well as occupancy of hotel rooms and amusement charges pursuant to Article 29 of the tax law of the state of New York. So Supervisor Bassin.
Yes.
Why gelt?
We'll go back to them.
Yep, I don't see them on. Leader.
Yes.
Benvenuto.
Yes.
I'd like to entertain a motion to pay the bills, accept the treasurer's report, and file the minutes within the clerk's office.
Make the motion. Benvenuto.
Motion, Benvenuto, second.
Leader.
That's the leader, supervisor leader, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Gary, I need to ask the clerk to read the resolutions.
Okay. Resolution 208 of 2020 through 212 of 2020 by Supervisor Sterling.
Mr. Chairman, I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Second, second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Gary.
Resolution 213 of 2020 through 221 of 2020 by Supervisor Lagonia.
The chairman, I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Second, Benvenuto.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Gary.
Okay. Resolution 222 of 2020 through 226 of 2020. We'll have to do a roll call on 226, but sponsored by Supervisor Scolera.
So it'll be 222 to 225?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Well, he'll have to make a motion on 226 as well.
All right. So we need a resolution or a motion, I mean?
Supervisor Scolera.
This is chairman, I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Second, Sterling.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Gary, so we need a roll call vote on 226.
Let me just, yes. Article 29 of the county board of supervisors to maintain the increased rate of sales of taxes and sales and uses of tangible personal property and uncertain services as well as occupancy of hotel rooms and amusement charges pursuant to Article 29 of the tax law of the state of New York. So Supervisor Bassin.
Yes.
Why gelt?
We'll go back to them.
Yep, I don't see them on. Leader.
Yes.
Benvenuto.
Yes.
Stats.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Mettler.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Riley.
Yes.
Eldridge. I think we lost Kathy, too. Bury.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Lagonia.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes.
Mia.
Yes.
Chamitas.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Scolera.
Yes.
Guzzi.
Yes.
Hopeling.
Yeah.
Morel.
Yes.
Knott. Skoda. We'll go back to why gelt? Is he on? Or Supervisor Eldridge? See how to count those nays. What have you got for? 30, 63A, 822 nay. The resolution passes.
Thank you.
Okay, bear with me one second. We'll go on to the next group. Okay, so Resolution 227 through 230, 2020 by Supervisor Benvenuto.
Mr. Chairman, I submit these resolutions for adoption.
Second.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull number 228 till we can get some more information.
Rob, the sentence?
228 is for the rehabilitation of County Route 18, which is Fish and Game Road. It deals with the authorization for eminent domain on four parcels of property owners who have not consented to the work in the taking of their property. Since it did go through Public Works and was approved by committee, if a supervisor wants to table this resolution, it would take a two-thirds vote to motion to table and second in all in favor if it were to be tabled because it is a valid resolution that passed through committee and is docketed for passage tonight.
All right, then I would ask for a roll call vote on 228.
Could I make an argument as to why I would like more information so that other supervisors might join us in that roll call vote? Chairman?
Go ahead.
So eminent domain, as everybody knows, you know, is kind of a big deal, and I think it is appropriate when there's, you know, public safety concerns or other concerns. But I would ask us to really make sure that we have all of our information before moving forward in eminent domain, which is essentially, you know, taking someone's property, yes, giving them fair market value, but they've said, no, thank you, we don't want to sell to you. And in my research just today, and I apologize that this is last minute, I just found out about this through talking to a few people, you know, from the town where the road is, and Kippy, I did call you today, I'm sorry that I didn't get to actually talk to you. I've heard that there's a lot in the town opposed to this project, and when I said, well, are there also a group of people saying, this is a really dangerous road, we have to do something, it's a public safety concern? From all four people, I got kind of the, no, not really, we haven't heard that. And so I need to know more about, you know, why are we doing this? What is the public safety concern? When I looked at the almost 500-page report from Dean Knox, it had a section about accidents, and out of the 19 accidents, 58% of them were roadkill accidents, either hitting a deer or other animal. And I'm not sure you're going to prevent that, and even right in the report, it insinuated that these repairs aren't going to prevent the accidents that have occurred. And I'm just wondering if maybe some signage about, you know, deer crossings and dangerous curves and maybe having the sheriff out there because one was anebriated driver, one was a speeding incident, no fatalities, all just property damage accidents. It just makes me wonder if there's not a solution to potential safety concerns that doesn't involve taking somebody's property. So that's my argument as to why we should wait at least a month to make sure that we're really looking into this being a necessary thing to go into eminent domain.
Rob, I had a question for you. How many parcels did we, were involved in this? Do you know offhand?
I don't know offhand, Jimmy. I know four, four people have, four parcels don't agree to the eminent domain. I know all the other owners, and this is Fish and Game Road from 9A to all the way into almost Fillmont, all the other owners have consented to it. And I don't want to, you know, I'll defer to the Public Works Committee because I know you guys have reviewed this at length. But in discussions with Dean Knox, Fish and Game Road on most of the road, if not all of it, has no shoulder. So if you go over the fog, if you go over the fog line, or if someone's crowding the center line, there's no road. And the road's in such bad shape, it needs to be completely rehabbed. So the purpose of this project is to rehab the road and provide shoulders where there aren't any to bring it up to standards. But I'll defer to the Public Works Committee because I know you guys have reviewed this.
And Supervisor, it was 20 parcels, of which 16 agreed and four did not. So about 25%.
Yeah, I forgot the number. I know in Public Works, I did ask that, now we questioned that even.
It was 20 to four, so about 75% yes and 25% no.
Yeah.
Rob, do we know how much we're actually, like, how many feet we're taking on these parts?
It was, it was discussed in Public Works, and I, Dean's comment on it is it was not significant, meaning that we weren't substantially taking someone's front yard, we weren't taking their septic system, we weren't taking, you know, large pieces of property, they were small gores of property basically that would make up the shoulders. A couple of the landowners, yes, there's hedgerows and screening that are right against the side of the road now that would have to be removed. But I think Dean represented as part of the project that would be replaced just off the shoulder. And I think people just are opposed to that.
I will say, and I'll ask you, Rob, this is, I've been on the board for nine years, or I'm in my ninth year, and this has been under discussion for quite a few years through the Public Works Committee. And I'm not on Public Works, and I've heard the discussions regarding this issue. So I mean, it's not something that we just sprung on people, it's been ongoing for quite a while. And I know the Public Works Committee, Jim, I guess as deputy, no, you're not deputy, I'm sorry, Ryan, have dealt with this for quite a long time.
But yeah, we have been dealing with it because I am on Public Works, and we've asked a lot of questions in regards to eminent domain because I feel the same way. I wanted to make sure that what we were doing was really needed. I don't, I don't want to be held to these numbers, but I asked when it was told, asked to find out, like, how much of a swath are we talking? And I, and I believe he said the widest spot, and please don't hold me to this, I thought was 12 to 15 feet, the widest, the rest was just small amounts. And they were going to still move everything back, straighten it out. In some instances, like Rob said, replant the hedgerows. And there's been an issue on that road. That's why most of those people on that road, really, quite frankly, have agreed to it, you know? So if you look at the percentage, you got, you got 75% agreeing to it, and you got a very small percentage not. And I do believe that due diligence has been done, being done because of the issues that we've seen as far as no shoulders, like Rob says, and the condition of the road and a lot of different spots, it does need to be straightened out. Unfortunately, when you go in and you straighten something out like this and you put shoulders on it, it does require, you know, sometimes parcels that need to be moved back. The other thing that you get into is a lot of people think sometimes that they own a specific piece of property, they don't realize that they really don't. It's county property or town property. And, you know, when they look at that, then they see us take another two, three feet or five feet, it becomes a big issue. So I believe this project should go through. I did question this eminent domain stuff, and I have to support this.
Yeah, I will say that, I will say that I used to drive that road frequently, and 20, 25 years ago, and 20, 25 years ago, it was a bad road. So.
Yeah, I'd like to be heard. This is Gene Mettler. I did speak with Dean Knox about this today. And what he said to me, it was any, 12 feet, so it's a little bit less than you thought. He said that with regard to Bove, it was .31 acres, and the parent parcel is 60.16 with Meisner, it's .57 acres, and the parent parcel is 170. And Coke, K O C K, it's 8 acres to be acquired. I would like to ask a question because maybe I'm wrong about this. Am I right that the only question before us today is whether or not we should proceed with this eminent domain? In other words, that the project itself has already been approved? Are we being asked tonight to approve a project or approve proceeding with eminent domain?
This specifically is to proceed with eminent domain, and the eminent domain procedure law has waivers where it is shown, as it's demonstrated in the resolution, that there's a public need for this eminent domain in this project. It actually releases the requirement for the board of supervisors to have a further public hearing on it. And we hired RK Height, which is a specific firm that does New York State, County, and local eminent domain appraisals and eminent domain proceedings. And they prepared this resolution with that specific intent that would authorize the project to go forward because it can't unless we get these four pieces that are needed.
But what I'm asking is the advisability and the necessity of this project already been decided by Public Works. I've been on Public Works since January.
I would have to say yes based upon their passage of the resolution and their support of the project.
Yes, yes, it has been. Gene, you know that, you, it has been.
Okay, thank you.
Rob, the, if we do this eminent domain, now, these property owners will still get some payment from the county?
Yeah, the county has appraised the value of the lands that we're taking from those owners. The eminent domain process authorizes the county to go ahead, take the land by court order, do the project. And the owners are within their rights to dispute the value and have further court proceedings if they want over the impact or the value. They can dispute the appraised value and seek more. So this resolution, when you get through eminent domain, makes the public project go forward based upon the necessity of the project and gives the owners the right to dispute values at a later venue.
Rob, are they disputing the value or are they disputing the land? I mean, we ran into this when we did Green Court, and most of those individuals were upset because normally in an eminent domain proceeding, they don't award much money. Is that a fair statement?
Well, they do appraise it, and they actually put a value on it. It's not significant here based upon what was reported by Dean. But no, we get the land, they get to dispute the value. If we were going to pay for a small gore of land $1,500, they can argue, no, I want $10,000. And that gets, that gets sorted out later. But we get the land because we've shown it's publicly needed.
So I'd like to ask a different question. If the, given the budget reductions for this year and the anticipated budget reductions for next year, would this be considered a priority project in the county? Is this how we want to spend our money in light of fewer revenues?
Yes.
I didn't hear, whose answer was that?
Supervisor Guzzi, I believe.
Thank you.
No, I didn't answer yet. I was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought somebody answered.
But.
Because I'm just thinking that we're spending a lot less money, and there may be, there may be projects that rise to the, that are more dangerous or that have a greater public benefit.
From what I, I'm sorry, Brendan.
No, I'm finished. I'm sorry.
From what I understand, that this project has been in the works for quite some time. I don't know the exact amount of money that is, we're getting for this, but there is money coming in for this roadwork, and this has already been planned. We spent money on laying out the engineering side, bidding on all that type of stuff. So we're, we're right there. We just need to get this straightened out to move this along.
We've also paid the company to do the appraisals, as, you know, as Rob pointed out. I mean, we have quite a bit invested in this at this point in time. And it is, it is a public safety issue. I mean, again, as I said, I've ridden the road several times, and it's a horrible road with no shoulders. And it's a county road that we own and could be liable for.
I appreciate that, and I use that road quite frequently myself. But again, I just want to make sure, I mean, I understand it's been in the works, and I understand that we've expended funds for it. I just want to make sure that if we have limited funds for projects this year and next year, that this would be a project that would rise to the top. I think there are a lot of roads like that road, without shoulders and that are curvy. I mean, I do a lot of back road driving, and I agree that it's dangerous and that it needs repair and it needs improvement, but I just wondered if it rises to this level in this budget and next year's budget.
Supervisor Adams, Supervisor Riley here. The only point I would make is now that we've gone on record saying it's dangerous, and we've spent this many years saying that it's a dangerous road, I think our liability's been far increased over other roads that we have not yet explored. And with 80% of the people agreeing to this on the road, we're opening ourselves up to liability if they, if they get their property damaged or one of them was in an accident due to our inaction at this point.
I can't parse that. I think the only person that could parse that would be the attorney. I understand what you're saying, but I don't understand how to measure the liability.
Um, Matt, excuse me.
Supervisor Maya.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see the more information. Can you hold it one month, the next, next meeting, we can see more information, then we can think about it. Is it possible? I ask you, Supervisor.
Again, this was a resolution that was passed by Public Works, by the way, passed unanimously by Public Works. Rob had laid out that if, you know, we can pull it with a two-thirds vote or we can move forward. So, Rob, how would we, how would we approach that?
Well, we got a motion and a second to pass the resolution, but then Supervisor Sterling asked, or was making a motion to seek to pull the resolution. So we would do a roll call, two-thirds vote, with a motion and a second by Supervisor Sterling to consider if we wanted to pull it for a month.
I will second Supervisor Sterling's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for a two-thirds vote on whether to pull the resolution or not?
And just to be clear, because this always gets confusing when this happens to us, if you vote A or yes on this resolution, you are voting to table the resolution to pull it for this month and to table it for a month.
Point of order, please. Point of order.
We have no idea how much it is, though, yet, right?
Didn't we have, I'm sorry. Didn't we have a motion and a second to approve it? Do we have to deal with that?
I'll defer to our attorney.
Yeah, I mean.
Before Sarah, before Supervisor Sterling asked to table it.
Well, and I think just based upon, she had actually asked to table it earlier today, is what I heard, or tried to make.
Then we don't have to, we don't have to vote on a motion and a second?
No, I think the best protocol based upon the facts that were given is, you know, let's consider a motion to table it because that's the request. I get what you're saying, Supervisor Bury, we're just a little off kilter in how it happened.
I understand. Okay, thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Before we vote, can I make another comment?
Sure.
Okay, Supervisor Chamita. I know that people are saying there's a safety issue, but when I read the official report that the county commissioned, it said, you know, I'm quoting, "It is apparent that most accidents occurring in the project area are relatively minor." And then it goes on to say, "As such, there were no accident clusters identified in the detailed accident evaluation that would require mitigation as part of this project." And so it's really not clear to me how this resolution really improves, improved the safety. And so that, that's what makes me concerned is that it is a high bar for me to do eminent domain. And it's not clear to me, and I think it's not clear to certainly to my constituents, why, you know, why this project sort of meets that bar.
Rob, is there a timeframe on this particular resolution that we have to follow?
No, this would be the commencement of the authorization for the eminent domain as to the property owners that haven't consented. So no, we're not, we're not, I can't speak to it as to our federal funding and state funding. If there's a time, I know this project is queued up as far as Dean's concerned to go forward with those funding cycles. I don't know what pulling it is or what that does to that timetable as I sit here. The only thing I'll say is to the road, and I know I've had this discussion with Dean Knox, is to put federal and state money into that road. From engineering standpoint, they're not going to give you that money or want to see that money spent unless you put shoulders on it to make it safer. Whether there's empirical data of the safety or not, if that was a new road going in today with federal and state money, it would have shoulders on it. So that's why they want to put shoulders on it now, which requires the taking.
Rob, is this project going to be done in-house or is this something that we've hired out?
My understanding is we bid this out because it's a large-scale project.
So my assumption is it's been bid out and it's probably already in the schedule. Is that a fair assumption?
I don't know if it's gone out to bid. Maybe someone from Public Works would know, but I know it's queued up, specs, engineering, everything's ready to go.
I'm not sure where that was left off from.
Yeah, I don't think they would bid it at this point until, you know, they know they can go ahead.
So I'm assuming, Matt, it's not going to happen this year anyway, is that correct?
Um, I don't know.
I don't think so.
I'm thinking, based on, we just did some roads in my town, and, you know, if you didn't get in early, especially if you're bidding it out, especially with COVID, things got pretty delayed. And they're pretty booked out, and that's a fairly large project. I'm just guessing. I don't know if that's true, but that would be my assumption.
Would there be that much if we just held this then another month to get some more of these questions answered? Would it hurt anything?
I'm with you, Jim.
Rob?
Would, would.
At this point, I think we need to do the vote, right, to table this?
Would supervisors? Yeah, I think if supervisors feel they need more information or there isn't enough information, despite the Public Works approving it, then they would have to vote A or yes in favor of tabling it for a month. That's the motion that we're pending on.
I have a question. I have a question, please.
Supervisor Musman.
There is no public hearing on this?
No, it's spelled out in the resolution that was drafted, the eminent domain procedure law. If there's a showing of the public necessity, it allows for waivers of certain of the statutory criterion. And our consultant said this was the situation where that was directly applicable, so they drafted the resolution. There would not need to be a public hearing before the Board of Supervisors to go forward with the eminent domain process. It would be a court process. They would be, each individual property owner would be served with pleadings saying, we're commencing eminent domain, and they would have the opportunity to respond to those pleadings. But they wouldn't, they wouldn't have a public hearing where they would come to you as supervisor.
Attorney, could we have a public hearing if we wanted to hear, you know, from the property owners that are, that are seriously opposed and the ones that are for it? You know, maybe the ones who are for it are like, well, we don't really feel the road's dangerous, but if you want our property, sure, we'll sell it to you. Like, would we be allowed to have a public hearing if we wanted input from the community members in that area?
I don't know the direct answer to that. I'm going to assume you could if you elected to, but I'd have to run that past RK Height, who's our eminent domain outfit for this project.
Now, now, the people, the 16 people, Rob, that have agreed to this, they're being paid for their property?
Yeah, they were all delivered. Yeah, they were all delivered the appraisals or they, you know, they they had individual visits from the engineering department or the consultants and they've all consented and agreed. And when I say I mean, the sixteen.
And they're going to get financial renumeration.
Exactly. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so back to my point, I'm sorry about the funding on this. I guess my question is if 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 this is state or federal funding, is this something we would lose if this project got pushed off? Or do you just not know the how this was being paid for, Rob? I'm not sure, right, you know? In other words, if there's money already in the queue for this and this project has been worked on for years and now we have the potential to lose that money, is that is that on the table on this?
I can't directly answer that, but I'll say, as Chairman Morel said, this project's been in the hopper and deferred uh, for numerous years. And I'm I'm not saying that if it was deferred again, that it couldn't be reapplied for those funds. I mean, the road does need work. Uh, I I don't think it's a use it or lose it situation. Okay.
So so I have one more. I'm I'm sorry.
Can I just clarify, please? Is Supervisor Sterling's uh, motion specifically to delay for thirty days? Is that what we're potentially voting on?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have, and is you, and that's what the second is for Supervisor?
Yes. I just want to get more answers. I apologize to do this last minute. I just found out about this yesterday.
And just to clarify, to jump in, I think if the motion to table is successful, then it would be have to, then it would have to be put on the docket for your next board meeting for you to pass. So it wouldn't be that we just wait thirty days and if nothing happens, it it got passed. The actual procedure would be, it would be tabled for tonight and it'd have to be taken up again at Public Works and then taken up again at the next full board meeting.
And then and then we could submit our questions to Public Works uh, in the interim.
Yeah, we can have. We can have um.
Okay.
The engineer, Dean Knox, I think should.
Yeah.
Address most, if not all of these questions. So hopefully we can do that in the next month.
Dean would be able to answer a lot of these questions quickly, you know?
So the other question I just had is how fresh the number is. I think we had a project number. I have a project number and I just don't know how fresh it is.
I'm not sure what you're talking about, but.
The the cost of the project. I'm trying to understand when if this project is six or seven years old, is the number that we have for the project six or seven years old or is it in today's money?
I would believe it's in today's money.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a a motion and a second to do a two-thirds roll. Uh, no vote. Rob, if you could explain this, a no vote would be?
Yes, if you vote A or ye- yes, for the motion that's pending, you are saying you want to table this resolution.
If you say no, you don't want to table it.
If you say no, you want to go forward and then vote on the resolution that was approved by Public Works.
Okay. Kelly?
Bassin.
I think, given the questions that have come up and the eminent domain issue, the prudent course of action is to delay this for a month to clarify the issues that have been raised. So I voted in favor of tabling for a month.
Why, yeah. Leader.
I would like to table it for a month.
Ben Venuto.
I'll vote to table for one month for clarification.
Stat.
Uh, being part of uh, this discussion for the past nine years, uh, I think this should move forward. Um, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of details worked out already, but uh, I'd see no harm in waiting one month to answer the questions of the supervisors. So I'll vote to table it. Yes.
Okay, Adams.
I vote to table.
Metler.
Uh, I voted in favor of this when it was in the committee. Um, I'm a little discouraged that all these questions are being asked at this moment.
I'm here.
My question, my 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 point before uh, was that I thought that the project was already approved in its essence and we were only talking about uh, eminent domain. All that being said, I would vote yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Riley.
Typically, I would give discretion to a unanimous committee vote, but as those committee members have voted to table, I will vote with them. Yes.
Eldridge. Yuri.
I think that the a lot of work has been done on this over a great number of years, but I can see the validity of some of these concerns and a one-month delay would not necessarily hurt anything here. So I'll vote to table.
Ward.
I'm out to table.
Lagonia.
I'll vote to table.
Sterling.
Yes.
Mia.
Yes.
Chimitas.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes, and I would ask that there be a public hearing. Thank you.
Calera.
Yes.
Guzzi.
Yes, I voted, uh, supported this and there's been a lot of work put in this, but there is some questions here that need to be answered tonight. So I would support that. Yes.
Houghtling.
Yes.
Morel.
As much as I want to vote no, I'll vote yes.
Not. Skoda. Yeah. Okay, uh, three oh six three A to table for one month. Eight twenty-two is either absent or um, yeah, they're actually all absent. So um, the resolution is tabled for one month.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question? So we're not all calling Dean Knox. Is there like one point of context? Should we go through Chairman Ben Venuto of the Public Works Committee with our questions that you can then go to Mr. Knox with?
Ron Knott is the chairman.
Oh, no, you're not making me chairman of Public Works, please.
The resolution, so I just.
I would I would say either Ron Knott or myself.
Ron Knott or Chairman Morel. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, so Chairman, we have a motion and a second for two twenty-seven, two twenty-nine, two thirty, two thirty-one, and two thirty-two. Uh, no, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Two twenty-seven, two twenty-nine, and two thirty.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Resolution two thirty-one through two thirty-seven um, by Supervisor Guzzi.
Mr. Chairman, I offer these resolutions for adoption.
Second, Ben Venuto.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Chairman, we will need to do a roll call vote on two thirty-four, which is the college and according to the um, county attorney anyway. And um, two thirty-five will need a roll call because it's a home rule request.
Okay.
Okay. So two thirty-four is going to be a simple majority. Is that correct, Rob? Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
Okay. So this is voting on the college budget, number two thirty-four, twenty twenty. Mr. Three Reddy, vote. Okay, Bassin.
Yes.
White Gelt. Leader.
Yes.
Ben Venuto.
Yes.
Stat.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Metler.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Can everybody mute their device until their name is called? Thanks. Um, I'm sorry, Collins.
Is that noise?
Yes.
Riley.
Yes.
Eldridge. Bury.
Yes.
Um, Ward.
Yes.
Lagonia.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes.
Mia.
Yes.
Chimitas.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Calera.
Yes.
Guzzi.
Yes.
Houghtling.
Yes.
Morel.
Yes.
Not. Skoda. Two seven seven six A, seven fifty-nine absent. The resolution passes. Now we'll go to a two-thirds vote on Resolution two thirty-five, which is the home rule request for special legislation to offer a twenty-year retirement plan on eligible employee. Bury. Bassin.
Yes.
White Gelt. Leader.
Yes.
Ben Venuto.
Yes.
Stats.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Metler.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Riley.
Yes.
Eldridge. Bury.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Lagonia.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes.
Mia.
Yes.
Chimitas.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Calera.
Yes.
Guzzi.
Yes.
Houghtling.
Yes.
Morel.
Yes.
Not. Uh, Skoda. Three oh six three A, eight twenty-two, um, absent. The resolution passes. That's it.
Thank you. Um, do any supervisors have any other business to bring to the board?
It's me again, the annoying one. I'm so sorry, Chairman Morel. Um.
I only I only have twenty-four percent on my computer, so you better hurry.
It's a quick question. I just wanted a an update from you. I was so happy that you opened up uh, to the public for letters of interest for the Police Reform Committee. I know they were due last Friday. I would just love a quick update as far as um, is there going to be an interview process? Who's going to be involved? Um, what the timeline looks like? If you could just update us briefly on that.
Well, I'm I be honest with you, I have not even looked at the application yet because I haven't had time. The deadline was closing business on Friday and I've been a bit busy. Uh, I am working on a format in terms of moving forward, in terms of what's going to capture uh, the best information and the and so I've been, I have been looking at what different areas and counties have been doing format-wise. Um, so, and there are some that are intriguing me. Um, I, as I told Supervisor Bassin, who emailed me earlier today, uh, it's going to take a few weeks. I'm looking at format. I'm look, I've got to go through the applications. I may, uh, I've had conversations with other other people in terms of, we may ask some additional questions of the applicants. Uh, the good news is we have all their email addresses now because they've they've emailed us most of the information. Uh, I want to do this right. I want to make this as equitable and uh, and uh, for lack of uh, you know, I want to cover all aspects of the county, whether it's uh, the minority community, the uh, you know, different geographic areas and so on. So it's it's not a process. I mean, some people, uh, somebody texted me yesterday and said, so what did you pick? I mean, I wanted, again, as I, oh, I want to do this right and it's going to take some time. Uh, and I may enlist some of your your help in terms of uh, who some of the candidates are and and uh, you know, what their qualifications may be. So it's, but it's a process and we have time. Um, you know, uh, I've looked at Duchess County and they've got like eighty people on the committee. I I don't know how they're going to manage that. Uh, I do want to manage it. We're probably going to have to do it virtually. That's another logistic we have to figure out and how we're going to, how we're going to get the public input. Um, so those are things that we're we're working through. I mean, I took the step of asking for names. I figured that would be a start. Uh, and that's behind us, but we still have, I still have some work to do.
Well, I appreciate all of your hard work and if there's anything I can do to help, please let me know.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Supervisor. And I've had other supervisors offer as well. So I I appreciate that. So and and I will say that the one thing I do know is that I was, I'm going to ask the Supervisor Ben Venuto from the Public Safety Committee to be a co-chair and I'm going to ask someone from the public to co-chair with them, from the private sector. So.
Great, great.
So that's as far as I've gotten. Are there any other comments from supervisors?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Um, I just want to make a clarifying point. I think under because of the defund the police conversation, there's a lot of conversation around the county budget. And I've, uh, I think I've heard several times sort of supervisors say that we cut the county sheriff's budget by twenty percent. Um, and it's my understanding that we cut the point four by twenty percent, which is closer to a three-point, a three or four percent cut to the to the county sheriff's budget.
That's that's correct Supervisor, but we've also uh, eliminated positions when the by not backfilling. It's 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 more than, you know, the sheriff tells me that when it's all said and done, it's it's a reduction of close to probably a million dollars. And I don't, I can't verify that at this point. I'm just going by what what he said, but there is a substantial reduction in it in his budget this year in this point in time. So, any other supervisors? It looks like Supervisor Sclare is going to fall asleep, so we better. All right, if there's no other uh, supervisor, I want to officially, I know people did this earlier, welcome Supervisor Ward from Hillsdale. Welcome to the board of supervisors.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure we'll be talking. Uh, I know, I know you're going to need to 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 talk with Kelly because she's the linchpin here, so.
I have an appointment with her on Monday morning.
Okay, she keeps all the trains running on time.
Okay.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
That's you later. So who's seconded? I'm sorry.
Sterling.
Sarah Sterling. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Hoes, have a nice evening.
Thank you all. Thank you, Chairman Morel.
Night, night.